We need to upscale so that the policy will be responsive to the baby incidences of the national health question. And thus of that, we go to have a community meeting and also go to collect people from stakeholders. And to do this, we have two layers, statewide organization for the zone. At the penalty level, we've been able to successfully conclude the statewide organization within number five of the year and after that. And then, going forward, we're going to deal with Abuja here, the river as part of our policy. But it's all that. For me, to also confirm also, on the MSNBC national program, we took four very well articulated people to the National Health Organization, further investment in labor. I am pleased to confirm that the four programs we took were approved. The national MSNBC users, all right, some programs that are in the research and the PR and the special membership program, the NC family, donor agency, and everyone in the regular manner. And of course, we return this to the rest of the program. I appreciate time for our coming to three quarters of the office and the commission to voice, be communicated to your official, it's not on your desk yet, it's in transit. So, I'm going to come to me. For the MSNBC, as I think our professional intelligence council, we found the list of those states not rated, those who are acting, those that are not acting, and those are ahead to be not rated. Opportunity set, great to the jury when there has, last year, twenty twenty-four, we successfully organized a house of faith, a national state, my wish to go that the director, then I attended, one of the most successful fair, and I talk to you, we are putting more ideas into place to go to work for the next. But for twenty twenty-five, we will bring in Kogi and Goshelaste. Our specialized skill, we have successfully trained and provided to twenty representatives of high degrees in our college. And we are very proud of that. And twenty twenty-five, we targeted people within which service in New York, and so closely.
Do not touch.
What MSNBC, we're going to bring our awareness, celebrate the rent, and also have opportunity for stakeholder collaboration. We have a road to we're looking at to meet the national health and maybe that we will also be being of all the function of those who make the law for the country. And for the competition besides, we've been contracted, and as I talked to you earlier, when the results passed, we'll make to agree to the, for this one, I think that my greatest to everybody. I would have MSNBC experience to come. All my glad, we have that coming, it's like we need to do something. I would have my next group, what we have done. Thank you. So, next, on here is Ian T., Aluzi.
Okay, so, um, as the colleagues, while they are in that, let me start with Ian.
Ah, alaikum salam.
Some of who are still in the gallery as the representation of our programs in the area. All our programs are targeted towards both of the MSNBC. Um, so, we have the N B N C I, we have the, the next, we have, let me start.
Thanks, Alorab.
Okay. So that we have, we just called the program, uh, like I have said, targeted towards enterprise good, and then we have the N B N C I, we have the SMIDAN Select, we have the N B N C I.
Come on. Never.
These are the steps, we are the national.
You already Aki.
Taking place.
Okay, hello.
The people that are talking about, they may say, you say, hand up, are the, um, high presidents of the nation, and they are a part of many stakeholders and attend to MSNBC meeting, and what we did there, provide adversary and councilors of MSNBC, and provide their products and services, provide MSNBC with VADA, education, and enlightenment, and certain goals, and, 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 they don't understand how we can, so we guide them on how to do the registration of the , uh, the, 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 and, 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 to provide them with information that is needed, um, uh, that is needed for, uh, capacity.
Okay, no good.
Uh, the status now, from now is that it's completed, we have completed the national health, and then we have departed to that, that all of the MSNBC to pass.
So, program will clear out.
And then the SMIDAN Select, the SMIDAN Select is go. Was, they, they carry on this, uh, and it is the ability for us, and, 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 not our opportunity, not our opportunity to create a government for that.
They're creating, they're seeing the chance for, somebody needs to be helping it out, if not, I cannot. I can't, I need screen shots, I did, I did plan, I need my phone, please, no, yeah.
It's a national framework for, for, for.
My phone is down. Oh, when they are in the ramen, she over.
There are support of our, MSNBC to be able to perform very well in, in the field. These are the numbers that we have invented.
Login on the screenshot, just.
Then the national development initiative, this is a program that has both the entrepreneurship and the vocational opportunity. What we do here is to impact on women and youth generally, to be able to have entrepreneurship skills, vocational skills, and at the end of the day, to empower them, to be able to share enjoy, and be able to run their businesses permanently. And then, of course, these are the other programs that we have in the, uh, the, have the, driving institutional, institutionalization of I S C to the, and implementation of several M O U now, and several other operations, like you have seen there, Mr. D, there, Art Business Bank, N Y L C, Nike, Noma Bank, E T C. And then, of course, the, 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 the,[633.12]
...out everything, do not seek to not be utilized. Very soon, people will engage with ICT. They provide us with all the relevant information as regards to talking it out. And what they want to do is to... What we have in mind, there are... We store at the end of the day, that information we are going to utilize. So, very soon, you will see proudly the cover of the office of features will be, will be displayed. And I think this will motivate us to, to know that whatever we are doing, we are being watched. Then setting up a similar thing, it's possible we intend to do. And then improving the social cohesion of the agency. How do we achieve this? We are looking at the two very three, three means. The aerobics, we started this before but it's tough, but we want to bring it back. That is what, so when, when you are inside, and then you share your experience. Alright, I'm wrapping up, and then support them in terms of health, heart, and then speed up family there from here. And then, this is very important, and we are getting more, we did on this. In terms of performance management, training system, this we are going to do in collaboration with the office of the head of the service of the federation. Very soon, why are we thinking? The use of apparatuses will not be in the service system. So, it's your hands more than pushing through. Alright, so, combination of staff handles, and then the boss. We are required for staff to be, uh, to bring in additional staff. So, we are considering that, but before then, we have submitted memo for competitive prepared for level numbers. So, thank you for that.
My name is Sir.
The Director General Sir, my goodness, good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, in the Nigerian construction, Nigerian technology and construction. Maybe our team will derive a cooperation from the, from the industrial investment sectors. And other project that has to do with textile garments and, uh, auto domestication. Now, in looking at the IBC for 2014 conference, we are working in Lagos. In Lagos, we have, uh, uh, garment textiles, cloths. We are looking at wood, and the contractors are outside.
Hello, hello. In Lagos, we have carrying out equipment and here on site because construction is ongoing. I'm looking at their new blog, looking at it, they are publishing it. Majorly in Lagos is the center for exercise in commerce. And common, with common facility that M S N is to use Lagos. And certain things in the European border states, in rural apparel states, in the wearing, in what states. And some honor, uh, constructions of operations on purpose of their M S N. In Abu, you are here, we, we wanted of the, uh, third party agriculture centers and some other places that took place there like the power transmission. They give me a big quarter here, and the common facility center in, uh, the textile garment common facility center. And in so go to, yeah, we wanted their, their blog has been completed. In Zara, there is a control workshop that completed. And all these actions are going, and what we are thinking is to coordinate in the provision of employment for the M S N. And the provision of wealth for the M S N. Our single project, and in doing that, one of the functions it does, for instance, has to do with construction. They must always design how do what a building or a construction look like. You have to imagine it within a cost framework, and then you learn you do that. And come up with a P of two, and the management, and, but that, it is the scope of...
... Okay, and then, then the event was... Okay, uh, this is the amount we expected to be at any moment, which is the last, which in the end, yeah. It's still the project of all. Okay, that's what we got it, and then for the overhead, the project of 250, then there are 109,000, 200,000. And then, I've already started, so the next slide, okay? And then for the, for the personnel, uh, we presented 951, then there are 501, uh, 600 and 64,840. Of which, you see the amount is almost one point two player. And there are, uh, according to limitation of the, uh, weight bill, uh, with the particular allowances. Okay, and then for the internal intervention projects, we presented 1 player, 173, then there are... And then we already presented, we, we, that's all the program as we mentioned, okay? Next slide, uh, this is the 2025 project. Our project for 2025, which are probably in our goals is at 8 billion, uh, of which we have not started, uh, uh, much money in it. As the procurement, we are doing process for our own, okay? And then for the overhead is 309, then there are, and then 900 and 6,000, and 6,000. Of which, we got a list of 3 billion, okay? And then still is ongoing, we got two additional, okay? Then the personnel, the personnel is projected, uh, about 100, uh, 1 billion, there are 373, 100,000, 400,000, 400,000. So, which now we are in speed, uh, speed by 30 years, so we have, okay? And then, for the internal investigation, uh, this year has got different factors, there is 2 billion, there are 600, uh, 600, there are 180,000. Okay, of which is still something with, with the character, okay? Next slide, okay, this is the headline for the, uh, overhead, of which we are almost 170, okay? And just put this, okay? Uh, then out of that, really simple, the staff track group was good as 1 player, 300 and 70 billion, yeah. So, this is for the G T A, okay? And then the advanced, advanced, yeah, is that the house, uh, uh, progress, and it's 400,000, 9 billion, yeah, 100,000. But, who handle that, oh, yeah. And then the source, yeah, is 12 billion, 100,000. The best line, okay, we understand, I'm tuning here. And the project, yeah, so, I'm not going to revise policy for the, for the charge plan, of which they, of all, they can ever, uh, present on the chat platform. And then, they activated them, and then they are around everyone. That's the number, you are able to protect them, and then on July, they will go on them, okay? Of which, at that time, you do not know anything, because you have no access to the portal. Okay, next slide, they done for the, for the release of, 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 that I see, around October, 2024, they suspended, they released. That's why during that, October, 2024, you do not spend anything, okay? And after what, 2025, we just, we don't forget it, and then also make, we go to the M S N. Now, we are expecting payment, okay? Okay, this is the circular of the office of the, of the General of the Federation, that is saying that in price, for the partners, there is 300,000, there are... The director general is 400,000, there are hotel, the money is of hotel. And then, for the, for the button is 100,000, yes, and then for the outside station is 100,000, yes, hotel. And then this is the General of the Federation.
So, we now have a very good form, like this.
I thought somebody was going to... Then South West, about 20,000, 300,000, okay? When you look at this, some of us, we want to say, I mean, it's a pity, it's a pity, it's a pity, it's a pity. But fortunately, one would expect that, uh, before 3,000, which is, I think, before 5,000, which is not, is not really, should not go to, uh, South West. But, really, thank you for your dedication. Then for South West, you see that is for 2,000, 9, 9, you know? Then South West, 20,000, 388. And, we are talking about workflows, that have been distributed across the country. You see, these are the lighting and specific projects, lighting and specific project. So, these are numbers, and I thank you for listening. So, uh, what we are doing now, so, I don't know where to start.
So, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
One, to the two parts of this arm, one there is a jersey for work for you, second one is a marigot. First one, just so that everybody wants, being like, your lord, you like your lord, he's just... What if you want, should we stop this? What if, what if, what if, I have to see somebody's face, I have to go somewhere, take a chair, nobody can help me, go to the gym. Who, what's this, maybe, I just... But, I don't know, so they just don't go to the back, so there. Everybody knows, just, you know? For people from our areas, people from every department, and you just, first, you go to the front desk. You put it to the back, you go to the system, you go up. As much as I was exposed, they were females, when you have, when you do something, they just... And that was a few months, few months. This time, I was videos, we were doing... I want that, only just there was, the book on the toilet, and it is gone down. And then, that's how we're actually present, because, we don't need to ask them, we don't have to say that, like, it's... And then I'm there, someone tells me, please, because I don't need to ask them, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a.
Last Friday on Kickstarter. One million people called and said that they want to be beneficiary of that one grant because they don't have CS, what excellence as an institution in charge of MSN. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, teacher sir. My question goes to Engineering Department. During your presentation, sir, you made mention of ITC being developed in different parts of the of the country. I would like to know precisely, like here, I enter this form beautifully, if, sir, what is the total number of subscribers we have? Here, I'm talking about this our headquarters. And who are they paying their subscription to? Is it Sweden account or to another account? Would like to.
It's not work, it's not work. I'll be done.
I don't know. If I want to speak freely, do you have a great feeling? Um, I want to talk about follow up. I don't know if there's any follow up on saying, I've been carried out for all these uh departments, probably experience and the mentality. What I mean is that, because I've never heard of this, that's why I said that to be corrected. If there was any follow up, because the country is really tough and we are doing empowerment, everything comes down to empowerment. And then things are getting even rougher. And the money is still being paid. They are paying for programs in different places, they are sending money to Sweden. At the end of the day, somebody will ask me, people used to ask me, although I was aware that when I was visiting, at some point I was quiet. I said, they were saying, what do they do? What do we do to follow up and to make sure that there is an impact of what we are doing? Because yes, there is an impact of what really we are doing, they will feel it. Do they really follow up these people that are being empowered or trained in one way or the other to do this? Because I, yes, truly I believe what you are saying, because if there is a follow up, things will change to some extent, to some percentage in this country will not be going over and over and over and over. That is just what I want to talk about. Follow up, if you're doing like follow up, please, we should include it, because if we do so, all of us here as a family, it will project us out. They will do more better. They're taking our salary, being so small, but some of these things can be.
Thank you so much. My question is from the data analysis presented by the director of the G. From the data analysis presented by the G. Director Office, that's what called the local um range. My question is, what is the reason for this? One, two, what is the way forward in creating a balance such that Sasa has a local zone could balance with North South or perhaps zones that got far advanced. We have a question from one of the K. Office staff. My question is, the G. has been the problem for years with partisan of the recent national administration. Partisans are asking, when the empowerment startup actually is prepared to their office? While the fastest, they are constantly on our face. Are there others? Are there not so? That's all. Okay, listen to me. Please, I want to know whether the government empowerment component of NPD is going to provide some assistance.
Others.
That's all.
Hold on.
All right. My D. Sir, the timeframe that his number of days for implementing our programs is becoming small and his financial support provided by the judiciary is also moving. In addition, the participants of the recently concluded NPD program are going to receive improvement. How can you as a source in enhancing the impact of the program, my question?
Others, others.
There are still others. No, 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 just keep going. Keep going, keep going. Repeat for logistics support to attend programs in the city. People will quickly reflect. Quickly, okay. That's all.
Quick, quick.
Let's start by, good, good afternoon, everyone. All proper talk of the town. Let's start by appreciating our table and analytic and the branch of the G. Conference and Dr. Charles only. Also want to appreciate everyone's effort in trying to reduce the management, how possible to support the management of the G. That's only. Hold on. Please continue, continue. Project money for ICSS program, I know in December have not been paid. Those who have discussed that we have programs in the G. Day of August or not at all. How to know the criteria? The only thing the government should ask is that it calls, one less, the Lambada here, but two, it really helps with all your consult position, but really struggling to carry on with this, plus association of this. There are strong business, there are.
Sometimes, sometimes I think I'm not prepared.
Those who have discussed that for you, I think that's all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. This is one of the thoughts for all those that asked about. Are we together? Okay. I don't want to talk to fast friends. We have another session to wait for. We have to go for a session. Um, I think several microphones for like native language questions and direct ones are providing a microphone to Mr. Galeria to answer to the songs and to share some more lines. So what's the first question? I want to say this at another person. This is the purpose of this town hall and a lack of sense. The point is you can force the camera to the river, you can't force it to the water. Because Smeda, as a Smeda town, after orientation, as to all the programs and all the things that we do, I'm not sure there's anybody that will come and meet some of these companies that you are, tell you that this is happening. The necessity is laid upon you to understand the agents market and the programs that are being done. Because people need us in three ways. Either they need us for our website, social media platforms, either they need us to improve our buildings, either as a makeshift building or a building that we're writing or a store that we're giving an exhibition, or either they need our humans. And these are many forms of concern, humans of Smeda. We should be ambassadors of Smeda. And I'm saying, if this is a platform where you get to understand the programs that are happening in all your departments, because you might be mistaken if you, the department that you are, let's say you're a procurement or you're an accountant, the most learned in law is lost, that you cannot have time to know what's happening in that business. Or when you go home and you are talking to your neighbour, you may have customers that are asking about that business. It's meant for you, either attend tomorrow and will make sure that this is recorded or be a part of the registration organization process that will start in every quarter. And in addition to that, please machine, every program that is happening on Smeda business, let us reintroduce it so that anybody will know. I'm just asking you that some people have brought their speed. You know, everybody is brought to the room, what is this program? All of these things, you try to explain on the website. Any of you guys? This is what, the body of police system, the right eye that can support the business. If those kind of laws, what do you do in Australia? We talk in the state. What is the combo? The combo, the check is a number. Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yes, and we can help you, I guess. Our mission cannot stop this one, because one, the people are not really there available, they need a great support, you cannot accept them. Secondly, I refer you, the other way is to not reach out to the cabinet seats. That's what developing organization. And we need to have this whole partnership and coordination department that can help us drive those processes up. We need to be proactive. Just, last, last, uh, last week, last week, so, so when Smeda lost their lives and property? Because their lives are governed by the state. As Smeda will be on the front line, to have a reform for this, it's not just Spanish people. I said to him, so you can be promoted, so I think we need to protect the lives of these businesses. And this is a commission of police that's the number of these problems. Make sure that the commission of police can arrive. Right, did you see this?
It's clear.
And the one that's to engage, the one that's to engage, the small businesses that are here, you know, they can understand when you start to support the properties that are running in this small business. And the topic, the, the IG has given us the trouble of all the commissioner of police, the ones who are going to do, will publish a number of all the commissioner of police in the state. But first of all, we can call the commissioner of police and he will not answer you in the state. So it's clear for our state managers, they then call and start to build relationships with those states as regards law enforcement. And it may not only be police, it can be any NSBC, it can be road safety, just to make sure that the rights and privileges for small businesses are secured. So, okay, all the favour say aye? And the G. Wait, the eyes are big. That question, could we?
Why have stopped?
That's very good, listen. That's hard for the G. Management, listen.
Yeah, um, we will answer.
Right? Answer the question, why you passing it?
He did the presentation, so he asked.
Okay, answer it.
One of the G. have been, they see the man ahead of the process. Uh, we should not go out of our problems. However, uh, we are aware of the cash bank system that's been responsible for some of the programs or some of the payments that we are dealing or due for. Regarding the cash bank, most of our programs, and obviously, uh, I think it's part of the thing that's.
So it's in cash bank?
The cash bank, we requested and I think it's possible that places.
So can you explain that? You know, if it is so. If it is of course not, you could rather, eh? You could get in, in contract. They get the contract, it's Smeda, it's A and it's B. Now, the process has changed. I wish you understand, the process, why can't you do it? Maybe I, maybe I'd have talked, I'd have talked better. Now, let me explain to you. After procurement is done and issues an award letter, are we together? The contractor will come, take the award letter, hmm? Go and do the job with his own money. When he has done, when he's done doing the job, he will come back to Smeda and say, I have done the job. Smeda will now send, uh, monitors to go and monitor the thing. If he says he was supplying five plants, he is supplying five plants, five laptops, he is supplying five laptop, adding HP laptops, adding, you understand? Smeda staff will now come back and say, yes, it was done. He then, he should now go from procurement to finance. Finance will now do and get everything and now cash plan it. If finance misses the fifteenth of that month, finance has to wait to the next fifteenth of the next month for you to cash plan. After you have finished cash planning, you now start praying a fasting session with the money to drop. And this year, money has dropped only once. And the money that I dropped, so, just explain it to you. Out of the seventy-six billion, only thirty percent, like twenty-something billion, we were of cash plan and other forty billion, that's not dropped. So what has become enormous, there are some people come to CEOs and teachers of the G. Say, come, okay, give us money. We have to talk to the nation of finance, we drop money for you. It's become a scam now in Abuja. And we fall prey to that scam, uh, we talk about that one, but it's not working. And I'm taking time to explain to you, yeah, so that you can understand, because my own people. You know, when people will try to tell you, what is going on in Smeda, I've got your money, you tell them to relax. And it's not just lawyers. And even we, we can see from even some of the things, welfare packages. And I applaud the union executives. I know that you are taking a lot of bullets, you are taking a lot of, of. So you understand, this is it. This is what is happening. At some point, where's the money? Some point, we run to money and we almost even borrowed money. We are trying with them to pull money from corporate to run some of our welfare packages. But that night, we gathered twenty-five imams and malam and let money, money drop. So all of your imams and malam there, apostles and, and priests, please, we will, we will need your services so that we can, there are so many last name of our people, we will call in there, call in their name. Eh? Reverend Azaya. So do you understand it? Is it, is it clear? All the favour say aye? Thank you. Next question, please.
I don't know whether I have a clue.
Why was Smeda's budget reduced, Jessica? I will explain that. One person. So, Smeda's budget was not reduced, I will explain. The last year, when you do the, Smeda's budget was four billion. This our budget is thirteen billion, I will explain. So it means that national assembly members will come to you and they add some points. Sessions for twenty-two project. But the one that we had last year, and the year before I came, was four billion. When I came, it increased to ten billion. That's the increase to twelve billion, that's our budget. But the total budget for national assembly reduced because one person, the, the, the semi-president had, only him had like fifteen billion euro in consulting project. The speaker had ten billion euro in consulting project. The head of our preparation had, so between the three of them was the five billion. So there was a central national assembly that gave them means of agencies that they should work with, maybe some, Smeda did not make that list. Why? Because, um, it was a deal of, they had agreed and the presidency wanted to use those agencies so it's good. Now, so you can understand some of the things that are acting. There is a development level right now that MITSDA is going to start getting, like incubation agencies are going to start getting. Every day we are going to be here to raise our voice, try and make Smeda better. Also that we can even get some more funds, we need some money. And so these are the kind of supports, so will you understand why most of the time it looks like we're spending time in national assembly? This is the reason. They pass the bill on the tax reform bill, Smeda is not there. MITSDA is there. MITSDA is, even if it's five percent, MITSDA gets every month on the tax, it could be billions of euro. So we as Smeda are fighting day and night to be there. I see there for Ashram, Britain, the name of the president, presidency has said we should hold on, we are going back to the G. Check, send it, share it, we need to make sure that Smeda enters us. I don't need time to clap, you don't need time to clap. When we start to clap, I tell you when to clap, please not to clap. When we enter there? Because they may begin, people are saying that ninety-six percent of all the businesses are SMEs, and people are saying that SMEs contribute to eighty percent of all the jobs. It's just probably a little bit, it's a little bit, it does put Smeda, makes Smeda behind. And it's the wrong type of fight. And that's, that's the last question. What are we doing for all the SME? We are giving it to national assembly. And that was, this Smeda, that, the good international assembly, and the same person can speak up and the SSS is Smeda. They want to appropriate and they're putting money in OJ River, they're putting money in, in other council. Do you understand that if they want SMEs to grow, it's Smeda?
What's the agency?
What is the agency doing to aid registration of companies?
CSC registration.
CSC registration. Personally, we have come up with our own registration portal, on smeda.gov.hend/portal. The good thing you register, who you register? How many of you know that? You can exist in society and society will not know you. How many of you know that? Somebody can be living here, if he does not have NIM, VV, driver's license, international passport, account number, society do not know you exist. Do you know that? Same thing. Smeda, it's trying to get you to be registered that you exist and it's free of charge. Only when you are registered because I will know that you are running a business, then we can now say, if you get funding, you need to know to register your CS. That's only when you can help me. And we have a program called GO, and then maybe I'll ask them to respond. In GO, one of the purpose of GO is formalizing in the informal sector, letting those that know how to say it to be registered. But in, 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 before we get that money in, we're already talking to private sector. When they've completely passed with the remuneration foundation, maybe they can give us, even if they give us some money to register SMEs, can register and run a whole company. Because that are the kind of things that are going to make sure that you can get to register with CSC, with Smeda is free. I don't know if you can show that, that's all. So we are really ready? So I'm going to show you our own portal. You have to go and pray. Let me take a break. Okay, wait, 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 wait. Abdu, how long is the prayer? Ten minutes? Huh? So should we take a break? Okay, let's use this opportunity to eat, eh? So can I start serving the food now? All those in favour say aye? Okay, food time.
Are we taking? That guy just, eh, that guy right there. You? Jack, Jack, right on the platform that they went to pray, because a lot of people are just sitting down there. They're just sitting down there waiting.
I want to down, please.
You want, you want to?
I want to, say somebody naked, give to the group.
Eh? Who talk about? Why I don't see him? Who, I don't see anything on there.
I see him, I pay you, so everybody, I give you the seat.
What is going on this show? Eh, I see him, I see him, he move for here, but he don't come up and chat.
No, I know this one here. They must be down, down, they must be house. Nah, this is not the one. That was it.
It's me, oh. Don't judge me, okay? What's happening? I don't know how that, I get.